September 5th, this is a meeting of the Lemmonster School Committee, Appleseed's Restaurant. It's 7:00 PM. Would you all stand, join me in a salute to the flag, which is still outside?
You promised it for this week.
I have it, one cop.
You promised it for this week.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It's this time, we'd like to have an open forum session of the meeting. Would anyone like to address the committee? Has anyone signed up?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Joshua Claus, for the record. I reside at 218 Central Street, Lemmonster. And I have a few things I'd like to say to the committee. Hopefully, it's under two minutes. I titled this as "Have Faith." We, as a community, want to come together and work together to make sure our schools are good, to make sure our community is good. As a community, we elect our leaders and see those elected leaders and appointed ones, such as the superintendent, in certain roles and responsibilities in our district. We place our trust in you when you are elected to do what is right. This past school year, the community at large saw this school committee, the superintendent, and the mayor fail to keep the trust of the community when it came to the largest budget in the city, the school department. As I was driving into Lemmonster High School this evening, I noticed the high school band practicing outside along with the color guard. It broke my heart to think music and theater and the arts were easily spoken of last year, how disposable they could be. And it broke my heart to think of a future where my son, along with many children in this community, face a future of uncertainty with the Lemmonster Public Schools. I'm speaking out tonight after having walked Ward III specifically, which is where I'm running for school committee myself, and hosted meet and greets so I could listen to people's concerns, parents' concerns, of the state of our schools. And after the summer break, I'd like to take a moment to report back with what I've heard. Overwhelmingly, great changes are needed with this school committee and the way it is organized. And I'm sure after November 7th, Election Day, that will be half the problem. However, I encourage people to stay involved right now and watch what the school department does. Many residents were very frustrated recently because the school bus routes were put out extremely late. It's consistently one thing after another that our administration is letting down the children of this community. With that said, when our school succeeds, our community succeeds. And how appropriate it is for me tonight, after having left Worcester Hospital ministering to some sick people on their last legs. They share their stories as a reflection on their lives. They share with me things that should have been done and the guilt for them not doing it. So as I rushed here to make certain I can speak in public tonight, I'd like us to all walk away with the same feeling of not doing something when it should be done, because decades from now, we, as a community, do not want to have regrets. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Anyone else like to address the committee? Once again, if not, we'll close this portion of the meeting. Superintendent, any communications or reports?
No communications to the chair, but a quick superintendent's report. We welcomed back staff and students last Wednesday. Students returned to classes on Wednesday, August 30th, and it was the first day of kindergarten for kindergarten students attending for the first time today, Tuesday, September 5th. We had a great start to the school year. I visited each of the schools on Wednesday morning, and it was very evident that there was excitement as staff and students started the first day. The school district is working through the remaining school bus transportation issues that have been reported and will continue to post updated route adjustments as they are made by the transportation company. And I'd just like to reach out and thank all parents and members of the community for the safe start to the new school year. That ends my superintendent's report.
Okay. We'll now move on to Presentations Committee Discussion. Mass Association of School Committee, Glenn Kuchar is here with us. This is the very beginning of the budget process, as we spoke to several weeks ago. And Glenn, if you want to join us at the table, is...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the school committee. Thank you for this opportunity to kick off the academic year here, because this starts our year as well. And one of the topics that we're frequently asked to address at this time, which is the best time to be doing it, are issues around school finance and budget. So I just want to say that I will go in any direction that you want to take me. I have some things I'd like to say and some information I'd like to share. And from there, we can walk through some of the critical elements of budget planning and finance that we need to address at this point in the year. But if there are other issues or concerns related to it that you'd like to address, I'll be happy to do it. I want to preface this by saying that Lemmonster is facing a situation not unfamiliar to many Massachusetts communities, especially cities, and especially cities that have a large residential base as part of their taxable property. However, there are some factors going on in the world around us that influence what's happening here with regard to budget and finance. First of all, this is the first time in my memory as an adult that the economy has not reflected the growth of certain elements of the corporate wealth world. Normally, when stocks rise and investments become more valuable and property values rise, capital gains taxes and revenues for the state rise as well. And then, when they start to fall, capital gains, taxes, and revenues start to fall. But they trail the actual loss by six months to a year. We're now in a relative economic boom, so it would seem, but the tax revenue is not reflected. And that could be either because people are not taking their capital gains or they're offsetting their capital gains with their capital losses. But the state ran a deficit last year at a time when the market had grown more aggressively than it had in most recent years. We haven't seen the money. I passed around to you just a State House News Service report that indicates that business confidence is waning. There are jobs, but they're not high-paying jobs. There are certain segments of the economy that are growing, but a limited number of jobs are involved. So when the money is going to turn up in the state coffers so that it can be shared with us is something that no one is in a position to say. And we're quite anxious about it. This year, the legislature was as generous as it could be, given that there are so many people out there looking for assistance from the state who haven't fared as well as schools. That said, school demands, unfunded mandates, costs of education have risen faster than the rate of inflation and faster than the state's ability to provide assistance. So we've got some element of wage stagnation, a tax base at the state and local level that's not growing as fast as we would like to see, business uncertainty, costs of retiree benefits and costs of health care all around are growing faster than the rate of inflation. Now, my background prior to...I always had a day job when I was on the school committee. And prior to running MASC, I was a gerontologist, and I dealt with people as they age and factors in aging. So I can tell you that healthcare costs tend to rise at twice the rate of inflation, and pharmaceuticals rise at four times the rate of inflation. So we're seeing that happening, and of course, you're paying for that in healthcare benefits as well, keeping people healthy, which is important. There's also a cost of state bureaucracy. Massachusetts is probably the most heavily rated, heavily...I'm trying to think of the right word here. Heavily imposed rate of regulations. The regulatory burden from the state for education is about as rancid a scenario as you would find anywhere in the country. I talk to my colleagues all over the country. We meet periodically during the year to talk about what's happening in our states. We have a lot of states that are in trouble, but no one complains about the oppressive regulatory burden and the cost thereof more than the people in Massachusetts because of, as I said, the rancid regulatory climate and the costs involved. So I don't know whether you've even calculated this, but the simple cost of compliance with the reams of regulations and rules that come down from Malden, less so from Washington, but mostly from Malden, the Department of Education, impose a crushing burden, and there's a cost of paying for the people who take care of that. It's extremely complex. Now, add to that, many of our cities are experiencing the same economic kinds of situations as schools. So we have cities cutting back on services at the same time as schools have been cutting back on things like extracurricular activities, non-tested academic curriculum. Regrettably, districts have not been able to afford a lot of the kinds of services that kids need to become well-rounded students to bolster their social and economic well-being. We're seeing our guidance counselors and our social workers in school and teachers telling us that they've never seen the level of stress with their student population, all of which adds to a scenario whereby everybody is angry. Everybody is anxious. And that's never a good thing, especially when it's complicated by the fact that elections come up every two years. And as I explained to my new superintendent friends, don't hold anybody responsible for anything they do or say within four months of an election, because that's just the way it is. There's something that we have called the complexity index. School funding in Massachusetts is extremely complicated. When you consider the foundation budget that calculates what's necessary for you to do an adequate job funding your schools, and then you consider the process by which that money is distributed, you have a system that is probably understood by a dozen people in its great detail and not many more in its large detail. The complexity index means if you were to walk down the street, walk down Main Street in any Massachusetts city and ask the first hundred people a question about school finance, none of them will know the answer. The complexity tolerance is just overwhelmed what it is, so people do not understand. So what we're now finding is school committee members are out in the community, and people are saying, "My child just lost access to an AP class. We found that our musical options have been reduced. I voted for you. Fix it." And they think that you can go poof and manufacture money. So they get angry. Everybody gets angry, and people want to kick the nearest shin. Now, I can tell you that the shin that I've always wanted to kick were the shins at the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education.
[laughing]
About the shins that the people want to kick locally, the people they go after, they go after the school committee, they go after the superintendent, they go after the mayor, they go after the city council, and everybody gets blamed. And no one expresses that anger rationally in a way that would make sense as to an understanding of how the municipal finance system works. So they don't understand that you're limited in your ability to raise money. They don't understand that you are limited in your ability to control the mandated services that drain your budget. And they absolutely don't understand your frustration with having to reduce services to kids, to eliminate positions. Everyone, every municipality is going through this. And they just don't understand that, and they just get angry. And it makes for a terrible social and political situation that plays out. So we hear this all over the state. We all think we're unique, but what you're experiencing in Lemmonster, what you've experienced, is not unusual. The fact that you found yourselves with a shortfall, the fact that the municipal side was able to provide you with relief to some extent, is qualified by the fact that very few municipalities have enough of a reserve to be able to do this for more than one or two years at a time. And if you thought, if I could say something good about this year, I would have to say that next year could be worse.
Well, that was encouraging.
May he rest in peace. The former commissioner used to say, "Can you say something nice about me?" I said, "Yeah, your replacement will be worse."
[laughing]
May he rest in peace. So there we are. So we have a very delicate and sensitive situation, and we have to begin planning to get through the next year at a time when, if there's somebody to blame, usually that somebody is the person who is imposing the unfunded mandates or imposing the regulations, or whoever it is that limits your ability to raise money, which is Proposition 2 and 1/2, and your restrictions in that regard. Now, there are some communities that are fortunate enough to have substantial elements of new growth that gives them some type of relief. But in a lot of our older, traditional cities, it's residential property owners that bear the burden, and people without kids at school, who are 70% of the community, don't want to pay for it. I used to hear this all the time from my older constituents when I was the regional manager at AARP. "We don't want to pay for schools." And I would respond, "Well, those kids don't want to pay social security taxes on their earnings either." So in terms of a solution, a long-term intergenerational communication strategy would be very helpful. Efforts to educate the community about how school finance really works, so that they'll understand that it's not any individual bad person who's responsible for your services being cut. It's that the environment, the economy, and several other issues that are that don't really have a face that make this a very difficult time for all of us. So we fight back. And how do we fight back? Well, our recommendation is that we have to look at a long-term and a short-term strategy. This doesn't go away overnight. You can put Band-Aids on things, and Band-Aids work for a short period of time. But we've got to look at a long-term solution so that five years from now, you'll look back on 2017, 2018 and say, "Wow, it wasn't quite as bad as 2008, but it was difficult, and we got through it." So step number one, the school committee needs to understand its fiduciary roles and responsibilities. And we'll talk a little bit about that tonight. You have, in addition to your obligations under the law to be the steward of public education in your community and to represent the values and priorities of your community, you have a fiduciary responsibility that has nothing to do with education. That fiduciary education is your responsibility towards the finances and the well-being and the health of the school district. The fiduciary responsibility includes a duty of loyalty and a duty of care. The duty of loyalty means you act in the interests of your district, short-term and long-term, in everything that you do. Now, that's easy to understand. The duty of care means you protect your district from some of the nefarious forces that may hover about you. And you've got to think about what some of them may be. It could be regulators. It could be businesses that would be leaving. It could be other infrastructure needs of the city that need to be met, that are going to draw resources away from you. That's not a nefarious force. I do think the dirty little secret that a lot of our municipal managers have to deal with is that we're dealing with an infrastructure that's very old. We're dealing with a lot of old water systems with lead pipes that have been there since the turn of the century. If you're in Boston, the MBTA has some...if you've ever ridden the Red Line and you've been, you know, someone's apologized because there's a switching problem in Kendall Square, some of those switches were installed in 1912 and are still there. They have to be replaced. And of course, when money's short, you can't take care of your infrastructure, so you put that off. And then there's a catastrophe, and things get worse. So understanding your fiduciary responsibilities and understanding the budget process and helping the community to understand. If the public understood how school finance worked, they wouldn't be happy with the fact that they don't have what they want, but they'd know where to point their concern, and they'd know how to advocate appropriately to get the relief that you may need, whether it be a ballot question that taxes the highest wage earners, whether it's some regulatory relief, whether it's other exemptions or other kinds of taxes, whether it's trying casinos to see if that works, all kinds of things that you can try to generate some revenue and to make sure that the community understands. Number three is when you plan your fiscal year 2019 budget, you build your budget around goals that are reachable and reasonable, and then put your money where it works to achieve those goals. You try to find out how much money you'll have accessible to you and make that work. And you hope that there are no extraordinary circumstances that come and undermine that. So as we look ahead and you're trying to figure out what it takes to get through the year, I'm sure that everybody in your financial operations side are already thinking about fiscal year 2019 and how you're going to get through that. Some of the things that you think about in keeping your budget affordable, if you have collective bargaining agreements that are coming up, those collective bargaining agreements need to be realistic in terms of what you can afford. You know, there are...what we used to do in the old days was we would kick the can down the road. So instead of, you know, we couldn't offer a raise, so we'd offer seniority benefits to people with X number of years. Well, X number of years from now, we'll pay it. Well, that came due about 25 years ago. Other kinds of deferred compensation, infrastructure postponements, other things. But on the collective bargaining side, we put a lot of things into contracts that we didn't have to pay for for 20 or 30 years. Sick leave buyback, vacation buyback, things like that. You just need to think about these things, and it's for you to negotiate, and it's certainly not for me to negotiate in public, so you want to think about those things. You think about the reasonable efficiencies and economies that you can achieve, wherever they may be. You look at what they call the SWOT options, S-W-O-T, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and what's the T?
Threats.
Threats, of course. So strengths, you know, Lemmonster is a respected school district. It's a respected community. People know it. And when they hear it, they say, "Okay, Lemmonster." As opposed to, well, I don't want to say as opposed to. Let's say something. If you lived in New Jersey, you'd say Camden.
Careful.
Hope I'm not offending anybody from Exit 4. I'm sorry. This is going to go on the Internet now, and I'm going to start getting mail. So you are...I mean, it's a city that's respected. It's a city that's been free of corruption. It's a nice place to come to. People go through it all the time. They may not know much about it, but at least it doesn't have negative connotations, and that's good. Your public schools, I have to suspect from what we see outside of Lemmonster, we don't hear outside of Lemmonster dissent, disruption, disagreement. I mean, there are always people that will not be happy, but I think people still feel good about their teachers. They feel good about their schools. They may not feel happy about some of the loss of options available to them, some of the extracurricular programs that have been cut. But people have not elected too much with their feet and leave. They support the Lemmonster Public Weaknesses, you'd have to look at your data and identify where you need to grow or improve academically. Everybody has issues. There are always achievement gaps necessary to close. Opportunities, think about what they may be, and that's a good brainstorming opportunity for you to have. Many of our districts are thinking about alternatives to keep kids from selecting charter schools or to bring kids back from other venues where they may be. Threats, let's be frank, you have a charter school that's opening up that will be...that could be a predator for some of your students, and you want to make sure that, as they want to do, they will take advantage of the fact that programs are being cut. They will exploit that and try to draw people away from you and take your funds away. So you're going to want to think about that and how you'll address it. I have to tell you that, as I said, this, the State Department of Education is always a threat because it's always looking for the greatest possible opportunity to find underperformance so that they can put you in a level that will make you vulnerable to some type of sanction. It's just the nature of the assessment and accountability system. Again, I would suggest that at some point, you might want to have a strategic thinking and planning session about those issues. You do have to understand the implications of your retiree costs and your employee benefits costs for your current and former employees, only because health insurance grows significantly. Other retirement benefits can grow similarly. And they will be pugging at you, and they tug at everyone. And it's nobody's fault that people are living longer than they used to, and sometimes at your expense, but it's just a fact of what it is. And people are going to get mad at you because of it, but as I say, it's several degrees away. The key thing that we're trying to explain to people is that this is really nobody's fault. I mean, there are occasions when things have gone wrong, people made bad decisions. But the municipal leadership has worked very, very hard in most, in all of the cities that we work with, to take pride in their community and to try to do the best they can. It sometimes is taken out of context. Now, the moderate term goals, we believe that Chapter 70 funding is understated by 20%, that if the state had it to give you, they should be giving you 20% more money in state financial assistance. That would resolve a lot of your problems. It would take quite an economic boom in order to do that, and it might require taking money away from somebody else, and that's also a problem. When they take money away from the Department of Social Services, you only pay for it later when the kids come into school in further distress. But Chapter 70 reform and the generation of additional revenue is important. Rallying your legislative delegation to understand the implications of your situation is important, and possibly thinking about whether the community would be willing to or not support an override to provide you with additional revenue if such revenue is permitted under your ceiling for Proposition 2 and 1/2. That's the basic scenario that we find ourselves in. Now, you know, as the Wicked Witch says in The Wiz, "Good news and bad news." The bad news is I've delivered it to you. The good news is... The good news is there isn't any more bad news. So, I'd be, I'm happy to take questions on that and then we can talk a little bit about a budget process and how you go about building a stable budget within your means. I wish I could wave a magic wand and say, "Boy, there's a lot of money just waiting out there for you to grab it." There isn't.
Glenn, I think what my, at least my overall goal this year is to try to get back to where we used to be with our budget process. We sort of left that and when we left that, it went more towards the way we did the budget and how we prioritized and my goal is to get us back there. For instance, I think in the last couple of years, prior to that, we would meet as a body, we would discuss our priorities and what the likelihood was of those priorities and what else we had, sort of, what are those, sort of, underlying, those other factors that are out there that we have to deal with, that aren't those popular things that most people want to understand. And you know what, quite honestly, the system isn't set up for anybody to understand. This is not something, so, some take advantage of the fact that you can really confuse people in this, in this process because it's difficult for anybody to, it's like taxation, very difficult for anyone to understand it. It's just the way the system is set up. But in the past, we would sit and discuss what the priorities were and in the past, priorities were spaced because we're overcrowded. So, the school committee made a commitment at the time that that would be a priority for us. And then we seem to have gravitated away to, the priorities are small class size, new buildings, more money, better paid, everything. And that's, well, that's a priority, that's what everybody wants. We want, we want, you know, we want all those things. Those are all things that, overall. But we've had a difficult time saying, "Well, which one do we want? Which is the most important?" And then I think the other process has been that is responsibility of the school committee, that they're not doing their job by advocating if they don't take everything sort of that is asked for and that is responsibility of the school committee to then throw over the wall the total amount requested and give it to the mayor and then it's up to the mayor to somehow or another fund that. And if not, then the mayor hasn't done his or her job and hasn't done it right correctly. And then to take it a step further to then make, you know, then to try to force decisions to be made that long-term are just going to get the city in trouble. You know, we've been there. This isn't like the city hasn't been in trouble before. It has. It had to go to the emergency control board to get permission, to get permission to borrow internally so we could build a school, $2 million. We couldn't even do that. That can happen again, long-term, if we don't watch where we are. So, what I'm trying to do is get us back in line, get us back, because I think everybody's interest are the same, we all want the best, to get back to some sort of a process. There is only going to be X amount of dollars, no matter what, no matter what it is, it's only going to be X amount of dollars. And we have to get back to a policy, of a procedure and a system that really establishes priorities. Some, it can't be, I mean, as much as everything needs to be a priority, not everything can be the first priority or the second or the third. Something has to be for a second or a third. Not everything can be first because it's impossible. There's ju, you said it, there is not enough money coming in to the state or the city to do that.
Now, what makes this difficult for the public to comprehend is that the city must balance its budget and the state must balance its budget.
Right.
The federal government does not have to balance its budget.
Right.
It can deficit spend using the economic system that we have. Now, we're $13 trillion in debt nationally. Someone will have to pay that off someday. I've already apologized to my grandchildren, but you don't have that luxury. So, people come in here probably and say, "Why can't we have this? Why don't you just appropriate it?" Because when something happens in Washington, they say, "Well, we need another $20 billion." Texas, weather emergency, we're going to need $100 billion. Well, we got it. You can't do that. They don't understand, I mean them, but the public doesn't understand. So, the public needs to have the means to understand. Some of our communities, when they begin the budget process, will have the graphics around to demonstrate the current fiscal situation of the district and the city so that they understand how much money is available and why. And then the public can watch as the budget is built up to the level that you have and they understand what limits are. Now, there are those, and I respect their points of view, who say that we should not penalize the generation of students today because of the lack of available cash to fund every program that they need. And we should just do it and make the people with the money come up with the money. And that makes great, it's all over the state, we hear it all over the state. It makes great rhetoric, but it doesn't work. And what happens is the people who don't understand just turn around and get mad. "What do you mean you can't put advanced placement physics back at the high school? You can do it if you wanted to." Well, okay, sit in the room with us and watch us eliminate full day kindergarten because we're giving you advanced placement physics. So, I would suggest to you, as you begin your budget planning process, do it openly, do it transparently, make sure that everybody out there has the numbers, that the community understands the numbers and that they know what the limits are. And you know, if there's stuff that you want and you can't have, needs to be on a wish list so that your legislators, so that everybody else can see what you would like to have if the money became available, it will at least let the public understand that you want to do the right things on behalf of your kids. Now, there's, there's other stuff that can be done more efficiently. I mean, there are those who will tell you that achieving a greater level of social and emotional strength among your students is something that doesn't necessarily get purchased with money, but comes from members of the school community working on it every day, integrating it into what they do and being understanding and sympathetic to the kids. I am of the opinion that there's no trick to successful student achievement if you have an excellent teacher in front of the classroom that's safe, looking out for the kid's academic, social, and emotional well-being. How we continue to get that flow of excellent teachers, of course, is another challenge if you can't pay them comparably to what they can get elsewhere. But the public needs to understand this. So, a financial school board, graphics, information out to the public so that they can participate with you. Another thing that makes this very, very difficult is a school committee is about the only place in American democracy where public budgets are worked out in front of the people who are the direct beneficiaries of those expenditures. Now, I'm sure you've had the experience of having a room full of people here to make sure that you provide the funding for their program or that you find the funding with money that you don't have. And they either leave happy or they leave angry. This is the lot of school committee members. And it's, you know, after 12 years on my school committee, I retired because I had no friends left. You make a lot of tough decisions. Nobody wins a popularity contest by serving on the school committee. There's a lot of satisfaction related to it, but it's very, very, very hard work because of all the difficult decisions that you have to make. Maybe the public needs to understand that, too. And there are strategies for making that happen. If you've identified your priorities, do you use your community media to reach out to all the different generations that use various media to explain what you're trying to do? Do they hear from you regularly? Do they see, do they get the explanations regularly? I don't know. I mean, you have to figure this out. But when you start your budget process, and there's no better time than the start of, you know, one fiscal year to begin planning for the other, you put this right out there and ask people to come and help you pick your priorities and help them understand how you have to balance some off against others and that not everybody's priorities get to be as highly prioritized as others. Then you do an assessment of how much money you think you're going to have. Now, there's a Nobel Prize available to anyone who can do a successful school strategic financial plan that's longer than 18 months because you are now into your fiscal year for 2018. Well, the federal fiscal year isn't even over yet for 2017. We don't have a federal budget yet. You have to do your budget before the state budget is completed. You have to make your best guess and that's hard, too. I am hopeful that since we're enjoying, you know, 12%, 15% increases in the value of investments, more in real estate, that we'll see some of that revenue and that some relief will come. But I'm fearful that that may not happen because of the experience we've had to date. It could be that the turnaround is just taking, you know, a little longer than we thought it might take.
Well, people don't, exchanges, they're not paying the capital gain. They don't exchange it so they can avoid that. And maybe if the, you know, capital gains changes, that might cause people to say, "I'll just pay the capital gains."
You might see that. You might see the flow of baby boomers now cashing in their 403Bs and 401Ks and paying income taxes. You might see it that way. We're seeing, in some of our rural communities, we're actually seeing people who are able to work at home and report to an office in Philadelphia from their homes in Covington generating some, some revenue. But in terms of property values, that's been very, very hard to see that stuff come in. Yeah, if you sell a house and there's a big capital gain, you buy another one for more money, you don't.
Or at least you send them out.
Yeah. Unless you hit mega bucks. So, the state picked up about $25 million in state taxes from that. Too much for us there.
From the earnings?
Hmm?
From Chickapie?
Yeah. We get 5% of that. The state gets 5% of that, just as stating to Texas, which is nice. But that goes into the rainy day fund. And the state is, the state's rainy day fund has, is not what it was. I did not mention that most of our municipalities do not have significant cash reserves to do anything other than resolve an emergency situation. So, prudency, if that's a word, being prudent, is absolutely essential. So, you get your goals straight, you get the costs of achieving those goals built into the system that includes your fixed costs, your best estimates, and at least let everybody know this is what's going to happen. Now, I'm assuming you also get financial reports on a regular basis, review them so that you know where you are. You may find that, you know, that you've squeezed pretty tight. You might find that you've actually learned to live with it, not that you ever want to squeeze that tight again, but if you've learned to live with it, you might find that there are economies that will appear. It's just very painful, as I've said, to see kids not getting services that they would benefit from as life skills for the rest of their lives, maybe not being available to them and it hurts a lot to see it happen. So, advocacy at the state level for additional state aid, advocating for other sources of revenue like the, the higher tax on, on the state's wealthiest workers is helpful. When you have your budget deliberation, should have it as early as possible and let the public participate and understand what you're going through. And, and, you know, we used to do road shows and visit all the schools in, in my community just so that everyone would know. And generally, in a bad year, people will turn out for that because they're all worried about what's going to happen. But a key ingredient to this is that when those meetings take place, the public needs to know from the very beginning that no one is taking this lightly, that the economy is dealing us a tough deck and that we're going to have to make difficult decisions. Help us make them. Those of you who are coming up to advocate for X, tell us what we would cut in order to obtain X. We cut Y? Okay. And then let you watch while the people who demand Y suggest you cut X. When we, for those of you who've been to our new member orientation, so we, we talk about the example, and I actually sat through this once, where a superintendent recommended higher class sizes in order to support preserving the electives, music, dance, drama, art in the lower grades. So, for elementary schools, we're going to keep the specialists, raise class sizes. So, instead of losing half a dozen specialists, we're going to lose half a dozen classroom teachers, but we're going to keep that program. So, what happens? Teacher shows up. I'm the fourth grade teacher, my job's being eliminated. And, you know, "Hey, I had a sign for you, I voted for you, I've known you, my parents know you. Oh, by the way, my mother and father are here, by the way, just to stare you down." Who are you with? Are you with me or are you not with me? Because if you listen to that idiot who wants to save the arts and electives and increase class sizes, why, he's just the most evil person that ever lived. And then in comes another, another person, the music teacher sees this very differently, thinks superintendent's a genius, wants to save all these programs. How can you not support this inspired recommendation, helping us, you know, deal with the fact that our classes were too small anyway? So, who are you with? These friends or those friends? That's the lot of the school committee member. The public has to experience this in order to understand the position you're in and they have to see this because there really are no demons here, just people trying to do their best in very bad circumstances. So, you do your hearings, you work out your budget, you hopefully get a favorable response from the municipal side and you get ready for the next year. It's, the thing about school budgeting is actually, it's, it is arithmetic. It's strategic planning, but it's arithmetic. Everybody can understand it. They may not be able to understand how the state decides how much to send you and where they're going to send it, but you could also make sure that they understand that maybe you are adversely affected by the way the state does its revenue and expenses.
Glenn, I, I just think it's important you could, because at the very beginning, you talked about the big picture. And I think we've somewhat lost as a community in some regards, the big picture. And maybe much time has gone by so that you tend to forget, it's another generation of people. But when I started to speak to the fact that bond rating went down twice because of bad long-term decisions that weren't looking at the, at the big picture. And every week, at least once a week, another community will call and say, "How did you guys do what you did?"
How did you what?
"How did you do what you did in terms of creating, you know, a stabilization account or paying down the pension, you know, paying down our pension obligations and all that?" Because the pressure is to continue to kick the can down the road and spend this money. But I can just say, and this has to be communicated, we were already there. This is not new to the city. And the bond rating went down and people will say, it even got to the point this time where people said, "The bond rating doesn't matter. It matters very little." And I'm like, "What? The bond rating matters very little?" It matters a lot. And that's big picture. And I think we've got to look at big picture as well because that is what's going to affect the kids down the road. Our ability to put more money towards education is going to be by putting less in interest towards the pension program, interest by paying it down.
The public needs, the public needs to understand that, particularly if your reserves dwindle and your bond rating falls and it costs you millions of dollars more to borrow to build what you're building or to go through, to pay your bills mid-year, that's a significant cost. Now, people will understand how that works if somebody explains it to them. It's a never-ending challenge. It's a never-ending challenge.
It's why so many communities are basically, in this state, more than half the communities are bankrupt. If you look at their long-term liabilities are, they're bankrupt.
The long-term pension liability is suspected.
They're bankrupt. And they're paying, they're not coming to their local meetings telling everyone how much they're spending. In interest alone, to pay for this. And again, let me just reflect back to when the bond rating fell from A to AA, and then in 1992, went from B double A one to double A. Then it went back down again in nineteen, at the end of 1993. Again, why? They had no stabilization account. They spent all their money in free cash. They deferred the teacher's salary. They had negative, they had a negative balance in the city. And where did all that come from? You just talked about a little while ago, all those sort of tricks and gimmicks that led everybody to think that they could continue to keep the class size down and do everything they wanted to do. And then the bill came due. And that's where the, I mean, people have to understand, long-term is critically critical because it costs, it costs people a lot of money in extra interest. And when we couldn't even borrow internally, two million dollars internally, unless we got a letter from the Department of Revenue and Emergency Control Board, to borrow two million dollars. And the first thing we had to do is pay off 1.2 million using our free cash to pay off the teachers' deferral.
Mr. Mayor, when you get to a certain age, people realize that tomorrow does come.
Yes, it does.
And for some of us, it's come.
Right. And my fear is, there is a movement to get us, to move us back to this environment of spending money we don't have, to use one-time money on fixed costs, to spend money instead of paying down on our pension system, which we're almost there, which is going to free up, if you look, millions of dollars back to the city, once that's paid off.
Why, it's your short period of time, but it violates your fiduciary obligation.
It does.
To act prudently over the long term.
Absolutely. And your bond rating is a reflection of your credit. And if, and it's like anybody else that borrows money for a car or for a home or anything else, it's cost you more if your credit rating is lower. In this case, we almost couldn't even get anybody to lend us the money.
The environment around you is a shared responsibility, and not everybody here is responsible for it. I mean, most of our cities and towns have underfunded pension systems. Most of our cities and towns are going to find themselves in distress over employee health insurance and retiree health insurance. So that, and that's really nobody's fault in terms of who's here at the moment. Those are decisions that happen over a period of time. But it only gets worse if it doesn't get addressed. And it's not easy, as I've said.
So in looking at just the preliminary budget calendar, it would be my hope that by the time the governor releases his budget, that's a pretty good indication of what funds will have. I mean, in the past, the legislation's gone up. But as you said, next year could be worse. So I think using this year's forecast. And then using the city's, you know, this is what we think we'll be able to provide or what the net school spending would be.
As you get ready for next year, I would just say this, the legislature has been our savior. The legislature has responded quite well in prioritizing education, keeping us at foundation budget. Now, various governors have made recommendations to put us on par, but it's the legislature that's always given us more. Because, you know, there are forty members of the legislature who served on school committees. Every local elected official is a potential legislator at some point, at some time. Legislators listen to school committee members. If you get your work done early and you go to your legislative delegation and say, well, unless we see some significant increase in state aid, this is what's going to happen, and they hear that from everybody, that has had an influence in getting us 25, 35, 40 dollars, sometimes 50, sometimes more, per student more. And last year, we asked for 100, simply because we tried to avoid the kinds of situations that a lot of communities went through, including yourself.
But we're not going to know that, Glenn, until later on. So I'm saying, for purposes of the calendar, our budget calendar, my hope is that once we know what the governor's budget is, is that the process is going to be different this year. And that's, the city will, you know, will have an estimate as to how much, what our commitment towards that will be based on our projections. We'll know what the student enrollment is by October, and we'll certainly know what the governor's budget's going to be. So at that, at that point, somewhere around February, we should know how much we're dealing, what we're dealing with in terms of a budget now.
A bigger concern, though, is that a lot of our municipalities are draining their reserves. And won't be able to do that for more than another year or two.
The state is, their bond rating went down because, again, they're using one-time money for fixed costs. And this is the way we're going. I mean, this is, this is what the pressure was last time, is to continue to use this one-time money, underfund certain accounts in the city that look like, well, we've got too much money in those accounts. And by the way, we went from a negative free cash balance to actually having some free cash balance, which, by the way, goes towards our capital needs in the city. There is no capital budget in the city. Free cash is what funds the schools in terms of our capital needs and our projects.
But I want to make it very clear. I think that, I think the people in Leominster have really fought hard for their kids, have done well by their kids, and have had responsible leadership trying to make this happen. Now, there's never enough money in the, you know, the Red Sox have never had enough pitching, and there was never enough money in Chapter 70. And municipalities never had all the funding that they need to do this. You've avoided a crisis, a real crisis, but you're in a very perilous situation along with your brother and sister communities because of the revenue shortfalls and the dwindling reserves. This is just something that happened. The economy has been challenging. I don't see this as an act of malfeasance or an act of malpractice. I just think this is a bad twist of fate. And while we still have the power to take control of it, we need to start making some of the more difficult decisions that the economy demands of us at this time. So that's why I'm glad to be able to talk to you, and we'll be talking to other communities at the beginning of the fiscal year, so that you can prevent late additional crises from people who will say, well, why didn't you tell us this was going to happen? We didn't know this was going to happen. Why are we finding out in May that the favorite teachers won't be back? People need to understand this ahead of time so that they can do what they can to try to head it off in appropriate ways.
Okay, so Glenn, around the discussion of budgetary, you know, having budgetary discussions before we plan our budget. And we talked about have people participate in the cuts of why at the expense of whatever. So I think one of the things school committee members struggle with is after every form, what are, what's in our, what are we able to micromanage or whatever? I mean, I think that's a real challenge for us. But also, you know, and I'm going to throw out a couple of examples. Okay, so, you know, being in such a tight fiscal time right now, you know, we've been challenged with, some of us are auditors, we get down and sign warrants, and we start looking at things, and we start questioning things. And, you know, so it came up, you know, well, why are we doing this? Why are we buying this? Our money might be better spent, you know, putting AIDS and stuff. So what, where, where do you draw the line for our responsibility, the administration responsibility? Because ultimately, we're responsible for the budget, but.
First thing you do is when you enact your budget or develop your budget, the school committee can approve language within the budget that instructs as to where the money's to be spent. Now, first, I should also add, as you may know, we don't use the word "micromanage." And the reason we don't use it is because it's an economic term, but it's also a bullying term. It's a term that's used by people who, you know, say, don't micromanage me, leave me alone. So, and we don't use the word dysfunctional either. Because, just because we disagree doesn't mean you're dysfunctional, or just because you're not doing it my way doesn't mean you're dysfunctional. With language in your budget, you can guide the administration as to how that's to be spent. Now, obviously, there's a lot of discretion that the administration has, what brand of product to buy. Your school committee's not going to get involved in a discussion about whether you buy Dial Soap or Ivory Soap, or whether you get your oil from so-and-so or someplace else. But in terms of your general accounts, your fiduciary responsibility gives you the right to budget it and manage it as closely as you wish. But I just advise you to make sure that your time is well spent. Now, sometimes there are equipment purchases that people might not have anticipated or might disagree about. But generally, we don't see too many problems around how the administration is spending the money, as long as it's spent within the accounts where the money is put. And some districts use as few as a dozen line items, as we say, some have 100. When you're looking at a warrant, you're doing your due diligence under your fiduciary responsibility to make sure that the bill looks legitimate, that the services are reasonable, and that they're likely to be provided if they haven't been provided already. I don't want to encourage people to hold up a meeting to say, there's a bill here for $29.75. What's this for, and why are we buying it at Kohl's when we could be buying it at Whole Foods or whatever? That's not what the system's designed to deal with. And the system is designed to allow you to tell your fiduciary managers, and your superintendent and your business manager, what general categories are there. You can create, as I said, a dozen, or you can have 100. In Plymouth, 10 schools, 10 line items per school, 100 line items in the budget. Superintendent wants to change any of them, he has to come back to you. Other districts, five or six line items, here's where it goes, come back to us if you need, if you need help. What we found on the management of budgets, that doesn't tend to be the problem. The problem tends to be that we didn't put enough money overall for this, and we should have. Or conversely, we had a mild winter, we put this much in it for oil, we only spent this much, we've got this much left over. What do we do with it now? A lot of districts delegate that to the superintendent based on professional judgment. Others say, no, we want to do it ourselves. So get your protocol straight about how closely you want to manage the budget so that people aren't surprised during the year.
Yes. So I think Leominster, I think we're different. I think we're special because we're us. We're a 6,000-student district, so it's larger than a lot. We have a huge transportation cost. We're spending 5 million, a little less than 5 million this year, that the city pays for through funding from the city, Medicaid reimbursement, some fees. And we're still trying to figure out the last couple hundred thousand right now. We have a lot of English.
City pays for your transportation? And that's where some of the Medicaid money goes?
All of it.
Eight hundred.
We've always, even though the law says we don't have to return it all, we return every single penny, every single year.
Okay. That's unusual.
Yes.
We have a lot of English-language learners. Are out of district and in district special ed. You know, costs like anyone else's are high. We're over net school spending, but not by much. The city does have a decent amount in reserves compared to other communities, for sure. And luckily, we were able to use some of those this year to get us out of 17 intact. The part that I think that we need help with is, we really fell apart as a committee in terms of looking at where we could do things better or differently to save money. And I mean that as a committee. I don't mean that the administration didn't do that, because I'm sure they were trying to do that. But it never made it to us because some people were advocating heavily for more money. Because I do think that we need more money. I mean, I'm not saying that we don't. And some of us were trying to see where we were spending our money here. And we had a community that is passionate about their students, and I appreciate every parent who is. But it gets, it was a very heated spring and summer here, and I don't think we made a lot of positive steps forward. And I felt like a lot of what was being talked about was, you know, we can't do this, our district can't function this way. It just brought our, we have great teachers, we have great principals. Leominster's been able to offer, you know, the arts and sports and tons of stuff that I think other communities haven't always been able to. So we're used to it, and we deserve it. And, you know, every student deserves more than what they're getting, certainly this year. But how do we get through all that without dragging our district down? Because that's what we did.
Perhaps you didn't make your decisions fast enough, and it ended up working itself out in the summertime. Or in June.
I think the priority part, which is, you have to, everything can't be the number-one thing. It can't be. I mean, there's just not enough money to, you know, pay off, you know, pay our debt service, transportation, class size is a small, pay the teachers well. It can't be everything. It's, there's not enough money in any district, even the richest of richest districts. I saw their budgets this year, and they talked about increasing, with exactly what you said, increasing class size.
So don't kick the can down the road, even within a year.
And I agree.
And make your decisions more quickly so that it doesn't get worse at the end of the year.
I'm not sure.
That won't solve all of your problems.
Right. And I think it's hard because, as a big district, there are a lot of different needs and priorities. And people are passionate about music over sports, over.
The biggest problem is that when you start talking about priorities, you're always going to come up with who's going to be hurt by the priorities. And I always use the example, and no one likes it. If you go to the emergency room and you have two pains, and the doctor tells you, Mr. Kutcher, today, you have to decide which priority. Is it your thumb or is it your headache? What do you think you, what would you say?
I would say both, of course.
Oh, okay.
That's it. But Ron, if you're having a heart attack and you went in, and they said, they'd say, come right in, you have a heart attack. That's priority. You have to prioritize it. The emergency room does it. And we only have, regardless of how much money our budget is, it's never going to be enough. Glenn just explained why.
We have to acknowledge the collateral damage to this.
Okay. So our job, like every other school district went through this process, was to sit down and say, okay, we're not happy that we have this. We want more money. We're going to advocate for more money because that's our job. But at the end of the day, this is the money we have, and we're going to go back and make sure that this has the best possible effect on every student's educational opportunity that we can. Am I wrong, Glenn? Am I off base here? Because that's not what happened here. That is not what happened here.
Although there are a lot of lessons from healthcare that apply to education.
I've always said, healthcare and education are never income producers. They are always income eaters. It's expensive if you don't have healthcare, and it's expensive if you don't have education. It's as simple as that.
But it's more expensive if you don't get well. So they're income eaters, but they're income generators in the long run if people do well with their outcomes.
Long, big picture, long-term, take care of yourself. You have a better chance of having less healthcare costs.
And if I'd known I was going to live this long, I'd have taken better care of myself.
I think one of our biggest problems that occurred was, I think we were still trying to wrap our heads around the previous year's budget and get where we were at with that. And it just produced a delay in doing the budget for this, for this school year. And I really feel that we, we need to clearly define a calendar for the budget and really stick to it, no matter what.
And that's what I have. I'll get, I'll get a draft out to everybody because there are some things that here we may want to eliminate. But it really starts tonight, and it goes on to finally, actually agreeing on the budget calendar, getting us all to agree that this is going to be in the budget calendar. Heather?
So I just totally lost my train of thought. So go to somebody else, and I'll come back to you.
And so in the, in this process would be things like having, you know, budget workshops, but looking at what the governor's budget is, looking at spending some time in January, February on our special education budget presentation. So we have a better understanding early on what, what is, you know, what the, what's going on in their world, right? So we can sort of prepare. So that at the end of the day, when we make our final decisions, it's going to be, you know what? Special ed has to be a priority this year. It has to be, if that's the scenario. And our dollars have to go back towards making sure that that's the case. Or in a scenario where, you know, school districts. Or, in a scenario where, you know, school districts are having a difficult time, you know, their buildings are falling in on them, right? And I talked to the last meeting about how now, it's not 69% reimbursement or 72%, that they've changed it to $321 per square foot, maximum. And any dollar you spend more than that, you're on your own. So it isn't 69% or 75% reimbursement. So anybody that's going to go build a school now, is going to find themselves in a different financial predicament. But anyway, it, you know, we'll know what the issues are, and then it will leave us time to sit down and say, you know, "These areas need to be addressed. How are we going to do that? We only have X amount of dollars. We spent a lot of time on, we don't have enough money. We spent a lot of time when we don't have enough money. We know that, we all agree on that. But let's look at what we do have, and how can we make sure that we're spending that money in the best possible way? We didn't have, you're right, Nona, we didn't have that time to spend on that part of it."
Plan your calendar.
Yep.
Get your work done early.
Thank you, Heather. So, thank you, I just remembered. So, I noticed that this is the presentation, actually, the finance presentation that Tracy did when we were at MASC, because I sat in it, and it was great then. I had a conversation with Tracy, who is field director for MASC, Tracy Nowick. And I asked her, because I've had conversations with other school committee people in other cities. And I think that one of the problems is that it's always a conversation about we, we, we. But when it comes down to it, it's three or four people. It's the finance committee who spends three, four hours talking about all this stuff, and coming back and doing a quick synopsis of, "This is what we talked about." And I think one of the things that would be really beneficial is to have the entire committee a little bit more involved in the finance process. Because I think that a lot is missed, a lot, you know, everybody comes in here with their own priority, and, you know, they, they are passionate about this, they're passionate about that. And, you know, that everybody wants to, you know, to advocate for their, what they're passionate about. But when there's only three or four people sitting around a table for one week, it was for seven hours in our budget process, and that was for finance, and then to come back and do a five-minute synopsis of what we talked about in finance committee, isn't really fair to the entire committee. Because I think that everybody should be involved in that conversation. It's a lot of work, it's a lot of information. So, you know, Dean has been chair of the committee for 24 years. He has a lot of experience. He should be a part of these meetings, to offer his, you know, his insight and experience. Do you know what I mean?
There are districts that begin their fiscal planning period with a workshop on goals and fiscal strategies, and everybody's involved, and everybody gives a general direction to whatever subcommittee continues work on the budget. Now, some school committees actually act as a subcommittee of the whole for the budget. That's a lot of people, too. It's a tough discussion to manage, but there's often less dissent and disagreement if everybody's been participating. But you do what works for you.
Absolutely.
I can't tell you-
You know, I feel like, we have four people on our finance committee, and two are on this side, and two are on this side. So it's always that kind of, you know, so if we have everybody involved more in the finance discussion, you know, a lot of people aren't, aren't a numbers person, and don't, but they should at least have an understanding and know what the discussion always is, you know?
Wendy?
So, I agree that we all need to be able to follow better what's going on. I kind of think we need a balance of having the goals for the fiscal year spelled out as a group, and then whatever the finance drills down on and then comes back with their recommendation. But we need that balance of input from everybody else, and so we all understand what we're voting on and what we're talking about. Having, the way our rules are laid out, or the way we, seems things have always been done, is if you go to a subcommittee that you're not on, you can listen, they're always open to the public, but there's no dialogue going on. So if we're going to, you know, it's one thing to hear what they're saying and what they're debating, but the way it's laid out, unless we do a workshop like you just mentioned, there is no committee-wide dialogue at that level. So that's something that we should probably look at, if we're all going to have a better grasp on the finance piece.
If I could just add to that, one of the reasons that you're not allowed to speak if you're not on the committee is because that becomes a quorum of the committee.
Well, yes, but if your budget works as an interim committee of the whole, and you call the meeting, then everyone can participate. The other exception is that if there is a four-member budget committee, what happens if members five and six want to come to the meeting? Because you run the risk of creating an open-meeting law violation. And the Attorney General's interpretation of what you should do is that anybody can attend the meeting as a member of the public. And if the chair wishes to recognize the public to speak, then any members of the public can speak. So there is a sort of legal end run around that. Because, I mean, even the Attorney General, and even the most zealous regulator in Massachusetts, could not possibly defend disallowing an American citizen's right to speak at a public meeting in the Democratic Republic.
Right. But a workshop sounds helpful.
At a finance subcommittee or a policy subcommittee meeting, if another member not part of that subcommittee attends, you're saying that they can recognize-
That member attends as a private citizen of Lemonster.
Okay, but not as-
And if the chair of the subcommittee calls for public comment, that person can speak as a citizen of Lemonster.
Of course.
Okay. But in the capacity of a subcommittee, if you have more than a quorum of the full committee...
If a subcommittee has more than a quorum of the school committee, then you have to call a dual meeting, as a school committee meeting and a subcommittee. But if you have a subcommittee, a committee of the whole, then you call the committee of the whole, and everybody's there, so the public knows everybody's going to be there. A lot of school committees act as their own budget subcommittee through the mechanism of the committee as a whole. And that way, no one is excluded from the discussion. Others don't, because not everybody wants to give up that much time.
Yeah. And in defense, let me tell you, it's a good thing, and especially for Kristen, took the lead on this. And it's a good thing that they took hours upon hours of their own time, plus time away from the subcommittee, to get an understanding of exactly what was going on, so they could come back and give a 10-minute presentation. Because our meetings would have went on for days, and it really took a couple of key people to get a clear understanding of exactly what the baseline was, where we're at in terms of the last year's budget, what the deficiency were, what the deficiencies were, and what those sort of items that needed to be placed on the radar, areas of concern. We had a deficit of 1.7 million. Kristen came this evening to tell me that.
There is a special corner of heaven for chairs of budget committees-
There is.
...and for middle-school math teachers.
Right. I agree.
Well, guys, a technical question. Are you able to call that dual meeting that night, or does that have to be posted? So say, three people show up. I mean, I never tried to stop anyone from speaking, but I tried to-
All right. If you're having a budget committee meeting, and other members of the school committee show up, they're as private citizens of Lemonster.
Right. Just like anybody else.
But you said it could be a dual meeting if-
Oh, no, no, you can say a meeting of the whole.
Committee of the whole means-
You would have had to post it that-
Post it that way.
Yes. But now, this is complication. If it's a committee of the whole, then the committee of the whole exists to make recommendations to the school committee.
Right.
Who's itself.
So you can have the discussion with everybody, and you can make recommendations back to yourselves as a body.
Yeah.
And then you get a second hearing, so to speak.
But I think, Glenn, honestly, I think if we adhere to a schedule, a real schedule for the year, and we allow, we start off here, public input, different aspects that, you know, 10 areas of the school department, principals, everyone, and then we narrow our process down to, and then we get to that ugly process, which is, "Well, we only have this much money." And then from there, and that, I think, will allow everyone participation in the process if we start early enough.
It helps if you know how much money you're going to plan with right at the start. It would not be unreasonable to develop a budget based on level state funding.
That's what I said, based on what the governor's budget is.
And possibly to have a contingency budget as to what happens if we get another $100,000 or $200,000 or $300,000, and go from there, so that everybody knows what you're working with.
I tried that.
Oops.
But we'll try it again. But I think if we start earlier in the process-
Right.
-allow that sort of public, let's everybody talk about all the things that we need, and then that narrowing process.
Yes, cities actually-
Then I think everybody comes along with us, you know?
Cities often take longer, because just the structure of a city, and the fact that you don't have a, you don't have a municipal election in the spring, and a town meeting to worry about, allows you to procrastinate a bit.
Yeah. Well, we wait for the legislature a lot.
Okay.
And that could be forever, and that's probably a fault. Eileen was next, and then Kristen.
So, I guess what I struggle with sometimes is that there's so many competing priorities, I think is really what you're saying. And for some of the things, I think we have to rely on, whether it's the administration or the building principals or whatever, because, like, I don't know if they need two boxes of pencils, or they need 10 boxes of pencils. So I think that, you know, for some of it, we can't get, you know, we might decide whether we need pencils at all, but, you know, if we're saying, "Yes, pencils are important," and I'm using that as obviously, you know, sort of a representation of lots of other things, you know, so, you know, I think we have to have faith that they know sort of the strengths and needs in their buildings.
I said, but they can identify them for you. If your high school principal comes to you and says, "Here's what I want for my advanced placement classes, here's what I want for A, B, C, D, and E," you can at least have a knowledgeable discussion about your secondary-level budget. And you can ask appropriate questions for the budget settor, which is the school committee. And sometimes it's asking them to weigh some of their own internal priorities against others. Now, sometimes those discussions get heated, but I do need to say in public on the record, if it's a budget-related question, it may be annoying, but it's not out of order. So, I mean, superintendents understand this, and the business managers understand this. They're used to a lot of questions like that. A lot of principals aren't, and sometimes get a little testy about having their recommendations questioned, and that they need to be coached to be more patient if a school committee wishes to explore a little bit about what's going on in the building, and whether or not it's as efficient as it might be. And you can sometimes work your way around that by having academic presentations at your meetings during the year, so that you can get some of those questions out of the way.
Right. But I do also think you have to balance that, if they say, "You know what, instead of two boxes of pencils, I would rather one box of pencils and a box of paper," you know, to go with it. You know, because you're not, we may not have that detail of what's going on in the city, in the, within this, you know, the building. So if somebody wants, you know, needs more special ed and more aids, but another school might need more, you know, less aids, because they don't have the same kind of population, we need to sort of think about that and understand-
Yeah.
-that the needs might not be generic across the board.
A lot of those requests come through the superintendent. You sometimes don't want to put a principal on the spot if a district is pursuing a priority, and that priority is fine with Principal A, but not fine with Principal B. That's too bad for Principal B, if the superintendent and the school committee are aligned in another way. And sometimes if you put Principal B on the spot, you put Principal B in a very awkward position. So you need to be mindful of some of that diplomacy around.
Right.
Glenn, it seems, it seems safe to say, on the municipal side and the school side, that most of what's in the budget really now, I mean, this is just, you know, it continues to shrink and shrink and shrink, is salary wages and benefits.
Mm-hmm.
And there's very few dollars left for anything else.
And even fuel leaves, yeah.
Exactly.
There's not a lot of discretionary money left over, and there's less than there used to be.
Right. And I think what, Eileen, I'm in agreement is, I don't know, I mean, we have managers for each of the schools. We have to count on them. We don't know whether they need 30 boxes of crayons, or at the end of the year, they're buying 30 boxes of crayons, because they might need them next year. I remember one year, we bought so much paper, they moved it 22 times, it ended up getting flooded out, because the roof leaked, and we lost it all, because they were trying to spend money towards the end of the year. And I agree, we have to go on their, we have to go on their professional opinion. But they also have to understand, through the superintendent, that they have to prioritize their budget, that we only have X amount of dollars, and that we have to count on, if they say they need crayons, you know, we're up the mindset, "Okay, crayons is your number-one priority, okay." If it's another teacher, and something else has to give somewhere in the process, but neither one of us, and none of, nobody here understands the sort of, you know, the complicated process, or the, you know, all of the, you know, finite details of what goes on in every school. And that's where you talk about the micromanaging part. I, you know, I want to know who the kid's results, and what are your top priorities? What are the things that you need? And we do have that. We go around to different schools, we move our meetings around to different schools, and allow each of the principals to give us a presentation on what's happening in their schools, and how things are going, and, you know, what they might need, you know? For five years, we replaced roofs in this city. Roofs are million, I don't know if you've had a roof down in your house lately, but there are millions, millions of dollars to be, we've replaced every roof there is in the city. We should have gotten the roofing business. It saves ourselves a lot of money. But anyway, I mean, and that's what it comes, you know, that's what it comes down to.
And I think we made a lot of cuts this year, out of necessity, but I think, you know, we are going to be looking at, you know, tightening our belts even a little bit more in some areas, and hopefully, expanding in other areas. But I think, you know, it's important for the community to know that it's going to be work in progress.
Right. Yes. And we, and I think we all agree, I think the consensus is, we need to start earlier in the process, that, you know, and I've said back last year, I said, our meetings need to be focused on student achievement and the budget. And we always gravitate away, and there's other things on the agenda, and things that, you know, we understand that. But I think if we put, and agree on a calendar, and everybody agrees that this is going to be the calendar, and how we're going to do that, I think we'll have a better chance of doing that. At the end of the day, at the end of all this, is going to be a number. And that's the number that we're going to have, you know, to work with. It's not going to be that process that we did last year, which only hurt our school system. We pump more money into the school system, and we're doing good things, and good teachers. But you know what? There wasn't one positive article in the newspaper all summer long. Everything was negative. If I was a parent, I'd be of concern, too. I have parents call me all the time, saying, "I was ready to bring my kids back to the system," but not after where I hear what's going on. I'm like, "What are you talking about? This is a good system. We've invested, long-term, we've invested in this system." There are plenty of people talk about good stories about our system.
I think if you start early and plan well, you'll end up with everybody feeling much better about everybody else.
Right.
At the end of the year, bad money ruins everything. The best of intentions, the most proficient of money managers, get kicked in the shin just for being at the wrong place at the wrong time through no fault of their own. Same with mayors, same with school committees. You're the easy target, because you're the one everybody votes for to fix all their problems, so why can't you fix them? And they need to know why.
Right.
So, yes.
But I do want to know, how do other districts do it, where you have dissent? And I think every person here has the best interest of children-
Yeah.
-at heart. And it's just a matter of what their perspective is, what their priorities are.
We all didn't have the same priorities.
We definitely didn't have the same priorities.
There can be differences of priorities. Learning how to engage in principled dissent, in principled disagreement, it's a good skill for elected boards. But, you know, there's another element, and I'm not referring to Lemonster, but I can refer to my own community. You know, in Cambridge, Massachusetts, you only get one vote. You don't get nine, you get one vote. And you list the candidates numerically in the order that you prefer them. So if we're on a school committee, why do I want to make you look good, so you can take votes away from me? So, a lot of the tension that grows up around the board table in many of our communities, grows up because there's a political element to the governance of schools. The same political element that has you representing the people of the community and representing them well, you're the people that people can bring their concerns to, because you're the people who are in a position to do something about it. So that same principle also makes you natural competitors to each other, in every community. So it's hard to be, if you were a working group at my company, working for me, we'd all be collegial, everything would be fine, no one's worried about competition for your position. But with the nature, the political nature of service on a school committee, it becomes, especially when an election hovers, it's very hard to maintain your objectivity. Because I've been there seven times, I understand, ran for office seven times in Cambridge, and, and that was enough, and I never want to do it again.
Never say never.
But, but, but you know, this is, this, this, just a lot of people have never, never had the guts to put their name on a ballot, and what they risk is, they risk winning, which is nice, and they risk losing, which is not nice. So, you see a lot of those temperaments playing out on the board floor because people want to accommodate their constituents. And as I say, I'm speaking about my own personal experience with the political science of dealing with, with a limited number of school committees that I've had that intimate involvement with as opposed to the, you know, three hundred that we, that we deal with in a larger sense.
Do we, Glenn, just go back to that process that we've used in the past where we set up, you know, sort of message boards around the room, everybody gets so many dots and you get, go up, put your highest part? I mean, you know, that's a simple approach, but it, it did get us places, we, we did come out of that with some-
Yeah.
-some results. We came up with more dots, which showed everybody that's the priority.
And it is very interesting, by the way, when, when people who serve on elected boards go to their day jobs and people do the, let's do the dot stuff, the people who have served on the elective boards always know to show up with extra dots. I'm telling you, they all do. How come there's seventy-five dots here and there's only ten people with five dots apiece?
Or dots the merrier. You've got to screen people before they come through.
Dots can be good, and, and, you know, we have, we can do goal-setting-
Yeah.
-exercises with you, so it's part of our whole district governance training that we can do, and, and sometimes that can be helpful, but you've got to start early, you've got to start very early. And this is, the day after Labor Day is the ideal day to start with something like this. So, don't lose the momentum.
You know, Glenn, what I found, the, the question of questions where you say people don't understand formulas and all that, you know what the other part of the equation is? Nobody understa, nobody. I've asked school committee members, how much does it cost to get to net school spending? What does it actually take each district to actually get to net school spending? Nobody knows that number.
You can find it if you're looking for it.
I'm just, what I'm saying is, no, everyone will talk about how much more you spend in net school spending, but what they won't tell you is what it took, because some district might only need to spend two hundred thousand dollars to get to net school spending, and another district has to spend two million, and they're the same, they're equivalent in the same population in the, in the community because of the formula. So, A, in urban communities like ours, and I think the one thing that, you know, mayors agree on across the state is, getting to net school spending has been a difficult challenge because just in our city alone, when we had the, the Great Recession, nine million dollars, you know, the state cut us, nine million. That's not easy to continue to operate, and, and we had very few cuts at all, you know, during that time when other systems were hacking, police fired, school teachers. It's not easy just to get, you know, for communities, just to get to net school spending. There's that number difference, difference between, from community to community.
And year to year.
Yeah, people compare us and say, well, you spend X amount of dollars over there.
That's just net school spending.
That's just one piece, exactly, and that's why it's so difficult. So, I did my own little survey and asked people, and most couldn't tell me. First of all, I mean, I'm talking to people on the inside that understand the formula, couldn't tell us because so much of the emphasis was on how much more you spend in net school spending versus how much does it take each community to get to net school spend, just to get to that net school spend. And that varies all over the place based on the formula.
Well, your superintendent would know, and your business manager's from Cambridge, so he certainly would know.
Absolutely, they know. I'm just saying, it just, the emphasis is on how much more you spend and not how much it takes just to get to that.
Right.
And for some communities, struggle, it's an achievement, always they raise the red flag, you know, they're like, high-fiving because they made it there. They actually made it to-
That's why it's so easy to make some political pronouncements and throw some rhetoric out there and have it make all kinds of sense to the people-
Yeah, absolutely.
...out there in citizenland, when in fact, it's, it's really not close to being that simple.
It's easy to-
I could draw some analogies at a larger level, of course, but I won't.
Yeah, no, I understand. And you know what? And, and it's hard because everybody here, we, you know, the group gets more diverse, and everyone has, you know, has their passion, which is good, on the school committees. We just need to arrive somewhere together. So, we can all take planes to get to, to where we're going, but we need to get to that same place, and I think that's the overall consensus of where everybody wants to be next time. We want to get, what's that, where you want to be?
No.
I heard you. But we want to get there and arrive at the same place all in one piece, rather than, we arrived, but maybe in nine different places last time, and it wasn't a fun experience. And I think the system took, you know, quite a hit, instead of focusing on the wonderful things that are happening here. So, it's, it's, it's start early and organize the process, and again, the next thing that we'll do is I'll put together a draft, and that's certainly something that people can change around, change the date, but at least it's a starting point on what that, you know, budget calendar will, will look like, and we can cut and paste and add, but at the end, we should plan on voting on that and stick to it, and stick to it, and center our, our future meetings around those workshops.
Thank you.
Thanks, Glenn.
Thank you, Glenn.
Thank you, Glenn.
Appreciate it.
We'll have some money next time.
Okay, any new or old business? If not, yes.
So, I would like, if possible, just to sort of have an update on, you know, sort of how things ended up with class size at the various schools, just to make sure-
Snapshot.
...things were on target.
Yeah, I'll email that to you because we're in the process of just updating from the numbers that we have as of September one. I didn't get those updated over the weekend, but I'll email that out to everybody so that you'll have the information in the same matrix that we had provided before, so.
And I know, like, somebody had contacted me today that there was like thirty-five children in anatomy and physiology class at the high school, and kids were just sitting on the floor, there's not enough desks and, you know, things like that. So, I don't know whether that's accurate or not accurate, or, you know, things like that, so I guess it would just be helpful to get a sense.
Okay.
So, that would be appreciated.
Yep.
Sort of a, here's what's going well, and here's some things that we need to sort of readjust here, right? I mean, sort of look at.
Nona and then-
Nona, I'm sorry, I didn't see these things.
No, I just would like to request, I know last meeting, I requested the end-of-year SIMS data from last year. I'd like to have that include the AP testing scores that the high school should have received this summer.
And we still didn't get a summer school report, right?
That's going to be on the agenda for the eighteen.
Okay, perfect.
Kristen, did you have some?
Yes, I know.
Yeah.
So, two things. One is, I talked to a couple members of policy before, it came to my attention about, we had a retention policy, we voted on a, a couple of years ago, whatever.
For middle schools.
I think that we didn't think through, it's not that it's a bad policy, I just think that there's some pieces of it that may be missing that I think policy needs to sit and talk to and work on or whatever, so I just want to request that we do that, and I know that they have other priorities first.
Let me put that, we remind them.
Can you share with us?
Can I share with?
Yeah.
So, we don't, our, we talked about if, with retentions, how, our policy says if the work can be caught up over the summer, then the student can move ahead. But what was happening, or at least once has happened, is mid-year of the following year, the student got to where they needed and then was moved up in the middle of a school year, and it's not forbidden in our policy, it's not addressed at all, it's not something we foresaw as a problem, so we're, we're going to need to address that.
So, why don't we put a list of the things together that are, might be in dispute, and then get them to policy and then policy-
Right, and, and that would be fine, because the very first thing we do have to deal with is a policy around that, the drop-off that we talked about last time with the, so if, at Northwest, I guess if the kids are-
Right, before middle school.
Yeah, so we, we have to deal with that first, so there's time to compile what else might have been missed in this retention policy.
And I leave that to the people who know-
Yeah, but if-
-retention things. But I think it's, it's not, it doesn't behoove the student or the teacher to plunk someone into high school in the middle of a school year who's been retained, who, you know, probably needs a little bit of extra support to begin with. The other thing is, we had an athletic meeting, but the coaches, more of a fundraising meeting, not an advisory meeting, and, you know, we kicked off the year before we really knew what the final budget numbers were, and they came in less than what a level service number would have, level budget number would have been from last year. So, we're trying to fundraise, we need about forty to fifty thousand dollars just to come up to where we were last year, and we're working hard on that, but I think the committee needs to know there may be a deficit in that line because we should have taken more steps to reduce things in the spring or the summer rather than now. So, I just wanted everyone to know.
So, wait, that's a deficit in the revolving account?
No, it'll, I mean, it'll be either-
In the general fund?
Yeah, I mean, well, I'm sure they'll wipe out the revolving account because we usually spend it all down, but.
Do you have minutes from your meetings?
So, this was a, not an athletic advisory, this was just a meeting of coaches, I guess, to come up with fundraising opportunity, and, and the hard thing is, every team already fundraises. It's not like every team isn't selling calendar raffles and everything else, so it's hard not to step on, you know, more toes to say, okay, athletics needs another forty or fifty thousand, but, you know, make sure that we don't encroach on the teams trying to raise money to keep, you know, what their level service was.
Just going back on your request for class size data, that's fine for the elementary, but it should be the master class list for the high school. That way you see each class, the size of it.
And we decide-
Go ahead, Matt.
When you're, I guess I must, I must either be understand, misunderstanding or not comprehending. We're talking about class size. Didn't we have an, wasn't there an understanding about class size?
Yes.
Didn't we? And that size was twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five?
Typically, the school committee policy is twenty-five.
Okay.
But-
And so, why we-
We had a lot of discussion over that.
Why are we dithering about class size? If it, if that's the, if that's the, if that's the drop-dead size, it's not the drop-dead size.
Well, it's not. No. No.
But we always agreed upon that that was, that it wasn't etched in gold.
That's the optimal size.
It's our goal. Right, it's our goal.
It's our goal, but we don't stand by it?
Well, I-
So, if we don't stand by it, what are we talking about then? That doesn't make any sense.
I think we want to see how many kids are in the class, that's all we want to do. We don't, we don't know the answer to it yet. Right, because we-
Whoa, 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 how can you say you don't know the answer if we've been talking about having this class size forever?
Well-
I don't understand it.
Ron, we had gotten some preliminary things from the superintendent, and most classes were within that range, but there were a couple of classes that were going to be at twenty-six or twenty-eight, and so we are not sure if that actually happened or not, which is why we're asking for, you know, a sense of class size, because we don't know if ten more kids, you know, entered, you know, the fourth grade at Johnny Appleseed or whatever it is. So, we need to see how that actually ended up panning out. And we always have a goal, but ultimately, we knew class sizes might be bigger this year because we've had to make reductions in staff.
I realize that, but I had been led to believe that it was etched in stone, that we don't go higher than that if we don't. Didn't it require a school committee vote?
No.
So, what, what do you do?
Sometimes we've done school choice where we've said, as long as it doesn't, a class size doesn't exceed a certain number, then we would take students in, but we've never had anything etched in stone, it's always been sort of at the discretion of the superintendent.
Supply and demand.
Right, exactly.
Right, I mean, if kid-
And do we have enough money to hire another teacher or not?
Well, and, I mean, if students move into the district, we can't turn them away, so if a class goes to twenty-seven or twenty-eight because a family moves in, we, we have to take them, I mean.
I know, but don't you guys understand what's been done in the past? If it's been done, that means it's something that we have to, we have to understand that that's the way, that's the way it's going to be done?
Well, we shoot for those, every district shoots for a different-
We don't have a set in stone policy that says-
Today, this cup is going to be blue, tomorrow, we're going to make it pink.
Ronnie, we don't have a policy that says class size will not go over X number.
Okay, that's what I want to know, we don't have a policy.
No, we have a goal.
So, that's why we're doing all this dithering.
We have a goal.
If we had a policy that said class size is this and this and that-
We always do this.
We always do. You know, if there's like a third grade before that was at fifteen, say fifteen students, they might get, move a third grade teacher to a fourth grade where they're a little bit more crowded, and then maybe they'd go to twenty-six instead of twenty-five, they've always fluctuated a little bit because we want to make sure that we're spreading our resources around to the best of our ability.
It's not etched in stone, Ronnie, it's just a goal.
And the class size is getting larger as you get older.
Well, okay, what's the difference between etched in stone and a goal?
Well, a policy is a policy, and a goal is something you strive for.
And the goal supposedly changed at, at the change of-
No, we're just saying, we want to see where we are towards our goal.
No, and Ronnie, from the, through the chair, from the very beginning, when we started the reductions, we were very clear with the committee that the class sizes would probably be above that parameter of twenty-five students in a, in a classroom, and we didn't really exceed, as some of the other members have said, we didn't really exceed that to a great extent, but the request has been, just let's look at the numbers as of now, since we registered a lot of students during the course of August. We'll update you, update the numbers, and then work from there.
I just, I just, from my perspective, I think it would be wiser, W-I-S-E-R, wiser, if one, we had it in policy.
But you can't hold it down.
We can't do that.
Well, then if we, okay, all right, if you can't hold it, then what are we talking about it for?
No, because-
It doesn't make any sense.
No, you have an optimal-
It's a man-made rule, is what I'm getting at. It's a man-made rule.
Ronnie, you have an optimal amount of twenty-five per class.
Yeah, I think we've spent a lot of time, I, 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 I think the easiest way to sort of explain it is that overall, we strive for the, for those numbers, we try to do better and, and, and get those class, you know, get those numbers as low as we possibly can, depending on what grade they are. I was just reading one of the budgets from other, other school districts, and they were, you know, K through five, we want to try to get to these numbers, kindergarten, we want this, and in high school, but then in cer- certain classes in the high school, we would like to get, so it's all over the place. It's, it's what our goal is, you know, what we hope to achieve, but there are a lot of factors that-
It comes down to kids being numbers, I mean-
Okay, I think we've spent enough time on it.
Okay, fine, but, you know.
Anybody else? If not, we're going to go ahead, second, I've said.
Yes, I'd like to make one-
You can.
Sorry, one thing under general, okay, so, you know, I was asked via email, and I think everybody got the email from Ned Pratt regarding this Interface referral service that, you know, I didn't sign the warrant because I wanted more information, and I got more information, and I was asked by the business manager on Friday to send the resource, which I did, but at the same time, in my email, I also requested that he seek, consult with our nurse leader, Kathy Godet. So, the link I sent was the Suicide Prevention Task Force, but really, the true link that's comparable to Interface is in there. So, I talked to Kathy a little about it, and the guy that sponsors it is more than willing to come in and talk to us, and I really think, again, it's another thing where if we can get something, rather than paying for the Cadillac, we can pay for the VW, and it's the same service, and we could put that money to better use in other ways. Jim, how much is this Interface? It's, I know the warrant was-
The warrant was for six, so it's twelve thousand a year, but we had only worked